All right, yeah.
Hello, sir. Good evening, everyone. May I have your attention, please? Good evening. I'm media program director Rony Camille, and I'm honored to stand before you tonight to introduce the dedicated participants of Tingsborough's inaugural Civic Leadership Academy. So over the last nine weeks or so, these residents have taken the time out of their busy lives to dive into the inner working of your town's local government. It's been a long day. They've explored, learned, and engaged with town leaders, departments, and the challenges that come in building a vibrant community. This cohort, which I will introduce in a few moments, represent not only a commitment to understanding how your town functions, but also a passion for making a difference. They've shown curiosity, resilience, and a deep sense of civic duty, and I am confident that their contributions will benefit this town for years to come. Now, as they move forward, I want to encourage each one of you to continue asking questions, participate in public service, and fostering relationships with this community. Tingsborough tries because of the people like you who care enough to get involved and create a positive change. Now, without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce our Civic Leadership Academy graduates. Ajit Nair, please come up. Amanda McLean. Head that way. Head this way. Head to the town manager. Anuja Khan. Pam Russell. Ralph Catalano. Samantha Buckland-McDuffie. Joining us remotely from India this evening is Ramya Rajendran. Absent this evening is Jason Long, and an honorable mention to Bob Gendron, who has also participated but had to step back. Please join me in congratulating them on this significant achievement. Thank you so much, Town Meeting floor. Mr. Moderator, podium is yours.
Thank you, Rony. Thank you, graduates. Good e... Boy, he's a lot taller than me. There we go. All set. Good evening and welcome to Tingsborough's Special Town Meeting, October 22, 2024. Now that you're all comfortable, would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion before me to allow non-residents listed below to speak as needed. Their names are Colin Loyzell, Town Manager; Adam Costa, Town Consul; Bob Mitchell, Barrett Planning Group; Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager; Rony Camille, Media Director; David Andrews, Finance Director; and then Catherine Grony, Library Director. I have a motion on that speaker list, non-resident speaker list. So moved in second?
Second.
All those in favor of allowing these non-residents to speak if needed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article number one. Well, gee, I didn't even read it yet.
I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds to sums of money as printed in Article One of the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. I have a motion in a second on Article Number One. Is there an explanation, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Article One is a funding article to fund the items listed in the article language. Importantly, these are not new taxes or increasing the tax levy presented to the town meeting.
That difference is $23,567.34. And the second item is $21,207.14 to fund the difference between the placeholder we had in May of 2024 and where the contract with our communication specialists landed. These are the individuals that work in our 911 Communication Center. Again, we're not increasing the tax levy. The town is still only allowed to increase taxes 2.5%. These are coming from local receipts, which, as a practice of our conservative budgeting, we always very low estimate in order to not spend money that we don't necessarily need to. So there's no new taxes tonight. These will come from local receipts, such as building permits, meals, taxes, which are collected at restaurants, and so on.
Thank you for that discussion. Pardon me, explanation. Any discussion, please? Article number one.
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road.
Thank you.
Our town manager is being far too humble. Okay? The $109,599.13 and $32,240.84 for the town share of the sewer debt indeed was mistaken. It was left out of the budget. The last three or four years, it's been routinely in the budget. What I'm saying to you, yeah, the administration dropped the ball. Finance Committee dropped the ball. Town of Compton dropped the ball, and no selectmen saw that problem. After that, had been in the budget for a number of years. So he shouldn't take that all on himself. That's why we need oversight. We need other people looking at things, not just taking it for granted that someone's doing it. Okay?
Did you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
But that was worthy to say that, what I just said. Okay? So I'm asking what steps, and we'd already discussed this, what steps, if any, will need to be done to ensure a balanced budget for fiscal year '25?
Absolutely. The balance, the budget for fiscal '25 is absolutely balanced. In order to prevent this from happening in fiscal '26, when we do the next budget, the budget that you'll see at town meeting will include a separate line item to call out this portion of the debt service. The problem is truly that we get all of our debt service numbers for the town's debt on one schedule. But because the Sewer Commission takes out this debt, they get it on a separate schedule, so they don't combine. And entirely my fault didn't add the numbers they sent me on to it. But the budget for fiscal '25 is more than balanced. Our excess levy capacity is somewhere in the $350,000 range, which is $300,000 more than it was last year.
So you answered my second question, because we'd already been communicating about this, that you're going to have a line item in the budget so to make sure that doesn't happen again. I hope that makes sure that nothing like this happens again, not only about the debt. Because not too long ago, we had people not looking, and someone took $600,000 over a number of years from this town. So we got to keep looking.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Line, Article number one. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article One as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article number two. Approve prior fiscal year bills to see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills, which were incurred during a previous fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article Two?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article Two as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Article Two. Explanation, please.
Article Two seeks town meeting approval to pay for bills that were incurred during a previous fiscal year using the funding available in fiscal year 2025. Under Massachusetts general laws, municipalities are prohibited from using a current-year budget to pay prior-year bills. If approved, these bills will be paid using existing FY '25 appropriations. They will not result in a new appropriation.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion on Article Two? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Two as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass unanimous. Article Three. Rescind in part prior funding authorization, CPC Community Fund. See if the town will vote to rescind the portion of the funding authorization voted at the May 7/24 annual town meeting pursuant to Article 12 in the warrant therefore, which portion authorized the expenditure of $350,000 to acquire the affordable unit identified as 10 Merrimack Way Unit C or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Three?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article Three as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
I second that. I have a motion and a second. Further explanation?
This article asks town meeting to rescind a prior authorization, which will return the money to the CPC fund balance. This item was intended to allow the Affordable Housing Trust to acquire an affordable unit that was being auctioned by the bank. However, the auction took place before town meeting, and as such, the town did not have an opportunity to purchase the unit.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion on Article Three? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Three as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Four. Appropriation CPC Fund. To see if the town will vote a sum of money to be appropriated or reserved from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year '25, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article Four?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article Four as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Explanation, please, for Article Four.
Sure, Mr. Moderator. Article Four is seeking town meeting approval of two CPC items, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. These items are funded through the CPC Fund, which is collected as a surcharge on tax bills in Tingsborough and includes a match from the Commonwealth. CPC funds can be spent on the following categories: open space, recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there discussion on Article Four?
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. Okay, well, I just think we need to go back because it's necessary. Okay? Phase One, we approved $800,000 in May of 2023. And this was the list I have in my hand of all the work that was supposed to get done.
Are we talking about something in Article Four?
We are. Okay, so...
Phase One?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The reason it's relevant is because Phase Two didn't get... Phase One didn't get done. And so we need extra money to finish Phase One.
What project is Phase... Okay, so the Sherbin Road?
This is considered Phase Two.
I got you.
It's $550,000. But in Phase One, we didn't get irrigation. We didn't get signage. We didn't get miscellaneous landscaping. We didn't even get picnic benches and tables. Okay? And we definitely didn't get the pavilion for $175,000. Now, is there a breakdown of what that $550,000... Oh, there it is, on the screen.
Well, did you have a question?
Yeah, I want to know what... People need to see what the $550,000 is getting them.
Oh, no, I get it. I didn't know if you wanted to talk more about Phase One before we went to Two.
Well, it was relevant because it didn't...
Sure.
Because we never finished Phase One for $800,000, and now we need more money.
Mm-hmm.
So we need a slide that shows what people are getting for $550,000.
I can't see the screen. Is something coming up?
I don't see the slide.
Yeah.
What are we getting for $550,000?
Thank you. Go right ahead.
As Mr. Crawford noted in May of 2023, town meeting approved $800,000 in funding for Phase One of this project, which was based on a presentation made to this body, NCPC, about the way that the town intended to develop the parcel. Those original proposals were created by a committee that represented residents and folks from other boards and committees called the Sherbin Ave Open Space Committee. From the original requests, the following items were funded and are currently in contract: a gravel parking lot, six pickleball courts, two basketball courts, two bocce courts, one shuffleboard court, two horseshoe pits, and a chip-and-a-puck golf area. Items that were intended for Phase One but were not included because they exceeded the available appropriation includes the pavilion Mr. Crawford mentioned. The invitation for bids that we issued for all of the sport courts that I previously listed also included a volleyball court as the add-all, which in procurement terms just means if you have enough money, you would award that. When the bids came in, we had money to award every other aspect of the project except the volleyball court, so that piece was not included. The basketball was an add-all at the time, but it was within the project budget. And so it was prudent to award it to the contractor doing the work now so that they didn't have to drive over amenities that they're currently building to achieve the basketball at the time. I think I answered the question.
You did, but we don't have a slide to show people?
Rony, I'm seeing the slide on my screen here. What slide are you seeing up there?
I'm looking for the slide that shows that now the pavilion's going to cost $285...
Oh, you want the breakdown for this? I thought you wanted Phase One. You want the Phase Two?
Phase Two breakdown.
Sure, that's the next slide.
So people can see it.
Absolutely. So this new request, which is $550,000, would support the following: a 40-by-20, I'm sorry, timber pavilion for $280,000. It would replace an existing gravel stone dust walkway that would be a half a mile accessible walkway for $100,000. The volleyball pit, which we got the pricing from the current contractor, is $45,000. And then additional landscaping features, including benches, picnic tables, and planting, $75,000.
Thank you. And I just have to point out, this is from Phase One. The basketball court was an alternate. Okay? We decided to build a basketball court instead of giving park benches and picnic tables. That's how I looked at that. Okay? And I don't know why an alternate would take the place of that. For me, if you had an alternate basketball court, I would have thought you got rid of pickleball courts before you would have given people no place to sit down. So I don't understand the logic of that. So here's...
As we've gotten older, the benches have become more important.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
And I must point out, too, something that I learned, is that $280,000 would be a separate bid. That's not part of your... For instance, the walkway, the volleyball court, landscaping, that's included in the current bid that we have out there in work right now, correct?
Sort of. We are able to, under Mass General Law, execute change orders with the current contractor to do just the volleyball and the walking trails. There's a cap under Mass General Law of how much you can increase a contract after it was awarded. Certainly adding the pavilion, which is generally not work this contractor does, would put us way over that threshold. So that would be a separate bid.
Be a separate bid.
But nothing has been awarded to Sunshine, so we're clear, because there's no funding in place yet.
So we wouldn't have to do that pavilion here tonight. My point is because I'm uncomfortable that we're going to be under budget. We need money again. I'm not comfortable we're going to get this done for the price we're giving them the money tonight. So I think we ought to hold back on the $280,000. So I'm in favor of the walkway and the rest of the program, but I'm nervous about... Is this cost going to balloon even more? This is going to be $1.3 million. Okay? So can I make a motion to change the number?
You want to strike the $550,000 down to...
$270,000.
Do I have a second? Okay, I do have a second. I have a motion and a second. Let's discuss that. Any further discussion on taking Phase Two and taking it from $550,000 down to $270,000?
Good evening. Allison Page, Recreation Director, and I'm also at Parker Lane. I also live in town. And I was also part of the Sherbin Ave Open Space Committee. Adding the basketball courts made perfect sense because it saved money. That was one of the alternates that the current company could get in. We weren't paying a different company to come in and have to go over what we had already put in place. So it was fiscally a very good and responsible use of the money. As you know, things sometimes don't pan out as we plan. And yes, the pavilion, due to some regulations that we had to follow for the state of Massachusetts, came in much higher than we had anticipated. Do we want to remove that pavilion from the scope of what the Open Space Committee requested? No, I don't think we do. I think if you've taken a drive-by or you've gone on the property lately, things are starting to happen. It's a beautiful, beautiful space that the town is lucky to have gotten back to the town. And I think that what we have listed is very valuable. The other things will come. The picnic benches and the tables are now going to be on the recreation's plate, so we will handle all of that.
That explanation?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Amended figure of $270,000?
Yes, I'd like to respond to that.
Okay.
Because I don't agree with that. Okay? People here got a sheet, a handout, in April 2023 with items on it. I don't understand why you can knock those off and decide to do an alternate. But we won't get into that. But I don't know about others. That doesn't sit well with me about the cost or any of it. Okay? This is what we were sold. This is a program we were given. So I don't agree with that at all. And I would like to ask also, as to that property over there, the clubhouse, is that going to be a rental property like Old Town Hall and First Parish Meeting House? Will I be able to walk in there? Or is that just going to be another rental so I can't even get in unless I pay rent? Same thing about the pavilion. Is that going to be rented? Or can people use it? I mean...
We're really kind of getting off of Article Four, We're really kind of getting off of Article four, but I will allow Allison to answer some of those questions.
Thank you. I don't think that this is pertinent to this question. Okay, the pavilion is obviously on open space, so it would be used at your leisure. The building will be more geared for use of the amenities around the property, so as far as it just being a rental property, no, maybe minimally, but not set up as like an Old Town Hall.
Thank you. We do have an amendment on the floor. I'd like to move that question. The amended figure is $270,000, again, the original figure you have in front of you of $550,000. All those in favor of the amended figure of $270,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
That does not carry. Article four, back to the $550. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article four as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
That does carry. Article number five. Town General Bylaw Edition. You wouldn't think you'd need a bylaw for this. Prohibition of beaching motorboats on the shore of Lake Mescuffick on the town beach. See if the town will vote to amend Article X of the town's general bylaws by adding the text shown below in bold and by deleting the text shown below as stricken through or take any other action relative thereto on motorboats. So I have a motion on Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article number five as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
And I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, I'm sorry, explanation, please, of Article five?
Mr. Moderator, this article seeks town meeting approval of an amendment to the town's general bylaws, specifically Article X, motorboats, by prohibiting the beaching or parking of motorboats, including jet skis and other personal watercraft, on public shorelines along Lake Mescuffick. This change will allow the Tingsborough Police Department to better control seasonal boating activity on Lake Mescuffick at the request of residents living on the lake.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there any discussion of Article five?
Here. Oh, okay.
Al Stamp, 30 Willaday Ave.
Thank you.
Just wanted to go over a little history on this. I didn't bring this article forward. I've been involved in a ton of discussions on things, and things have gone on in my four years in the lake, growing up around the lake for about 30-ish years. It's gotten out of control there, and I understand the spirit behind this amendment, but I think it's a Band-Aid on a ball. I hate to use that analogy. I've worked really closely with former deputy, now chief, Woods, on numerous issues, some including my own children almost getting run over by a jet ski just trying to swim out in front of my house. You know, dealing with the state rep, trying to get support, being down there all hours of the night, dealing with people at the boat ramp because either Tingsborough's tied up, Drake it's tied up. I think this will help, but the problem is, is all you're doing is creating something else, and somebody else is going to have the police that we don't have funding for. Chief Woods has done an unbelievable job in both capacities in moving funds around. They don't even have a line item to enforce in doing a marine patrol, but with the help of the association, they put a boat out there, they've tried. I just wanted to be very clear that with this going forward, if we don't get support from the other side of the lake, this is for nothing.
You are, you are for this article?
I am for this article.
But it's just a start.
But just for, you know, folks that don't live there, you know, they don't see half of it, you know? Half the world lives on Facebook, whatever else, but the reality is, is you don't really see how ugly it gets out there. The drunkenness, the jet skis out there after dark, it's just absolutely ridiculous. You go over to the Drakehead Town Beach on a Monday morning, it looks like an absolute bomb went off. And that's a state-funded ramp, you know, I'm pursuing other angles there because that's funded by the state, that needs to get dealt with. But, you know, I appreciate that this is being brought forward to give these guys the tools to at least put a little bit of a sting on it, but the reality is, is as a town to preserve a beautiful waterway that's getting trashed, you know, this is really just a small piece, and, you know, if this doesn't do it, you know, I'd be looking to really strike having any of that stuff out there because it's just, it's unnecessary. Somebody's going to get killed. And my other capacity is, you know, an emergency first responder, I've been there for near-fatal accidents, it's just out of control. So, you know, I'm all for it, and I hope everybody's for it, but we have to do more.
Well, appreciate that. Thank you very much for that explanation.
Actually, too, our town manager has been in contact with Drakehead's town manager, and they got a copy of this article and then their town meeting's in May, so we're hoping it gets on their town meeting in May, so it's going to be the full, so basically the Drakehead Beach area, all of Tingsborough shoreline, and with the help from the Tingsborough Police Department, and we, and the association is actually looking into, once this all passes, hiring detail to enforce, because it's, Tingsborough's been fantastic with our association, you know that.
Absolutely.
And I wouldn't expect them to put manpower out there all the time, but what our plan is to do is actually hire detail, whether it's environmental police, Drakehead police, Tingsborough, and pay them out of the association funds through the help of our members to get this under control. It's our first step forward, you know it, you and I are always out there.
Yep, and the reality is, is the funnel that's causing all of this is a state-funded, abandoned ramp that just lets everything in there, you know, and going forward, I think in future budgets, this town should definitely look at, you know, giving them a line item for this, you know, whether it be on the Merrimack, you know, their responsibilities along upon, and Mescuffick itself, something bad's going to happen, and I really, I'm trying to avoid that.
And that's what we're all trying to avoid, and I appreciate your help.
Yep.
Chief. Our new chief.
Shaun Woods, 152 Sherbin Ave.
There we go.
I just want to take a moment to thank the Lake Association. This was a quality of life issue that was brought to our attention, and we wouldn't have had the resources or the funds to take care of this if it wasn't for the Lake Association, so thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a quality of life issue that was brought to our attention that we didn't have enough, any enforcement authority over, whether it was in Chapter 90B or town bylaw. It's a, not only is it a safety issue, boats beaching onto the shoreline, but it doesn't allow for the efficient operation of the lake. Too many boats on the shoreline take away resources of people to use, people go and enjoy themselves on the beach. There were times during the season where, because there were so many boats beached, we couldn't even access the boat ramp. So this definitely is a problem. It's not the only problem, but we are doing everything we can to resolve that, again, with the help of the residents and the Lake Association. So I am for this, hopefully this passes. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to either ask them tonight or give me a call at the station. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Article number five. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article five as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That does carry. Article six, zoning bylaw amendment, sign bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw specifically Section 7.2 thereof entitled signs as follows or take any other action relative thereto to have a motion on Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article six as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Article six. Explanation, please.
Article six is a zoning amendment that seeks to reorganize the town's zoning regulations regarding signs. Additionally, the bylaw amendment would address inconsistencies throughout the existing signed bylaw and to present the regulations in a more organized and clearer format for easier interpretation by the town's planning board, building commissioner, zoning board of appeals, and residents.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there discussion of Article six? Hearing?
I'm not opposed to Article six, okay? But I do have a question.
Sure.
I'd like a little more input of what was changed. I know we reorganized bylaws, but were there any substantial changes made to bylaws through making the changes?
Mr. Pullen, you've spent a lot of time on this committee. I know you're hiding back there. Joe Pullen will be just a moment. This was a multi-year project. Thank you, Joe.
Joe Pullen, 22 Sequoia, Zoning Board Review Committee and Zoning Board of Appeals. The question is a good one. We do have some minor changes, but mostly it was clarification and putting the format in a tabular form that everybody could understand. Currently, our zoning rules were, we believe, all over the map.
Oh, yes.
And it was very hard to understand, especially when you were trying to adjudicate a petition for a new sign. So going through this table, you can see that basically we've broken it down into all of the major sections of town by zoning districts. The, one of the major clarifications is going to be on the next article, zoning bylaw amendment with new definitions. And that definition, again, I'm sort of carrying over to the next article, will define clearly what some of our changes to specific signs are. One of the major changes that we did put in the current zoning law was to limit the amount of electronic signboards, or at least define where they can be used. We do have municipal use, we do also have a use for educational purposes, and that would be for schools in town, okay? As far as proliferation of electronic signboards on Route 3, we wanted to limit that. We did not want to look like a community closer to Boston, and that's it, so.
Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion, Article six?
No, just a comment, so this had nothing to do with the Trump sign on Route 3, right? Okay.
Or the tent. No, I don't believe so. All those in favor of Article six as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That does carry unanimous. Article seven, zoning bylaw amendment, sign definitions. We may want you again, Mr. Pullen, we'll see. See if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw specifically Section 11 thereof entitled definitions by adding the text shown below in bold or take any other action relative thereto to have a motion on Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article seven as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
I have a motion and a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Article seven is a zoning amendment that seeks to amend the definitions relatives to sign regulations to clarify the definition of billboard and gasoline station changeable copy sign, which are currently ambiguous within the existing bylaw language.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion, please, Article seven. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article seven as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That does carry unanimous. Article eight. Article eight is the capital item approved, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong part. Borrowing appropriation, capital improvement for fiscal year 25. See if the town will vote to raise or appropriate and borrow the sum of $900,000 and that the town be authorized to accept any available grants for the purposes of funding the following capital requests or take any other action relative thereto to have a motion on Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote $900,000 is appropriated for acquiring a new fire engine, including the payment of costs, incident or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $900,000 under GL, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the select board is authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
Is there an explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Article eight is a capital item approval from the Capital Asset Management Committee recommending that town meeting authorize borrowing of up to $900,000 to replace a fire engine for the Tingsborough Fire Department. While these items typically appear on a May annual town meeting, the condition of the engine the fire department seeks to replace is so poor that the town didn't think waiting was prudent.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion, please, Article eight.
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road, I don't oppose this article either, okay? However, I think it's worthy of comment that people should know how this is getting paid for. Now, I would ask the town administrators to describe it. It's actually going to be paid out of general revenue funds, so there'll be really no new taxes to us other than what's already being collected, so I appreciate you explaining that.
Don't be taking all the common's work there.
No, I appreciate Mr. Crawford pointing that out because this is something I like to point out. This is going to be a regular general fund debt item, which means that it will be paid for out of our debt budget, so the same budget that we talked about earlier in Article one. We have not had to borrow through that mechanism in three or four years due to the availability of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, so the only borrowing that this body is familiar with in recent time is the middle school debt, which was a debt exclusion. That's where the debt is taxed to you on top of your normal taxes. This is regular recurring general fund debt, which means that it will be paid completely within the operating budget. There are no new taxes associated with it, so I appreciate Mr. Crawford giving me that opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, and we've got to remember what about our debt, our debt, our debt, while we're borrowing money, it still, it still does add to our debt, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Article number eight?
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to just say that I fully support the fire department in town. I do see that this is a big significant need for them. God forbid anybody need their services and the current truck does not function for you, so I'm a big supporter of this, so that's just.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Al Stamp, 30 Willaday Ave. As previously stated, I work for a neighboring department, going through the woes of having some equipment, getting a little long in the tube. Tingsborough's limped along with this engine, I know this truck very well. I would implore citizens in town to actually visit your fire station when the doors open, go in and actually look where they live, look at the station. Around Lakeview Ave, where the other station is, and there's an engine there, that door's open, the guys are doing their drills, whatever. Go look and look at what doesn't fit in there, what isn't in great shape, because you'd be surprised. These guys do a great job with what they're given. This is not a big line item if you actually know what they cost these days. You've literally pigeonholed them at this point with the buildings that they're in because they have to custom order almost everything they have because a modern-day fire engine doesn't fit in the shacks they're living in, so. Just being honest, guys. So just check in on these guys, see what they do, you know, see what they're living with, because this is, they've gotten everything they could out of that truck, and I stand very strongly behind this for them.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.